You guys are live. You may start.
Excellent. All right. Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the school committee meeting for January 26, 2021. I'll take a motion at this time to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Trista, second by Rob. All in favor? McLaughlin, I. Calligan?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
Higgins?
Hi.
All right, is Malter Pennington there? Oh, I see Ellen. Ellen, how do you vote on opening the meeting? You're muted, Ellen.
Pennington, I.
All right. Please stand with the Budge Legions.
I'm here, Tim.
Budge Legions, the flag?
To the flag. The United States of America.
To the Republican.
Which stands.
Yeah.
Under God. Liberty, justice.
Justice.
All right. All right. As this meeting is held remotely, it is closed to the public. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 6 and 9. Recording of the meeting will be posted on the ED Cam website. If you should have any questions, so the public was instructed to email me. Any questions that they may have that would like to be brought up? We did one email that I'll address that later on in the meeting. And just for the informational purposes of the public, this meeting is remote. For the reason that there was a scheduled basketball game at the same time. And there were not, there was not enough hardware to film both the school committee meeting and the basketball meeting game at the same time. We want parents to be able to watch their children play. So we did end up going remote today. We will work to make sure future meetings are in person. We are committed to having in-person meetings whenever possible. Personally, the agenda is report from the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Advisory Council. Kira, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? Can you hear me all right?
You can hear me fine.
Awesome. So first things first, the class of 2024 is hosting a hat fundraiser where you could, it's a hat day. And then the class of 2021 is hosting a gift card fundraiser until the end of February. Where flyers will be sent out to parents' emails soon and will be posted on social media. Unity Club is getting ready for Black History Month. They're going to utilize things like announcements to share a person of the day, whether that be a black activist creator, et cetera. They're using the TVs in the art hallway to present a slideshow that they made, which will basically cover all of those things in a nicer format. They're also putting together a spirit week to get more people involved. Triumph is participating for the Relay for Life this June. And the Senate, the Student Senate are making a compilation of videos from different school clubs to present to the freshmen. Because the freshmen weren't able to have their freshman dinner this year.
Relay for Life happening as a live event, like a, like a regular year?
They're not entirely sure on how it will end up going, just because we are planning to go to the one in June. And so they're hopeful that it will be live if COVID is better for them. But if not, it will be held remotely.
Questions for Kira? Thank you, Kira. Moving on, report of the Standing Committee. We have a second reading of the recommended changes to file BA School Committee Operational Goals and file BB School Committee Legal Status. First reading took place on May 26. I had to go back and look at our notes to remember that far back. Any comments, concerns, anything from the Policy Subcommittee or questions from the rest of the committee about this?
This is just, um, the first paragraph we removed because we didn't feel it was necessary. And then, uh, they're just simple changes. On the next one, the BB School Committee Legal Status, we changed meeting to election, because that's what it should be.
Ellen, why does it say three, five, six, seven, or nine members of the school committee for terms of three years? Shouldn't it just say six? Because that's what we are.
It could. That's just, we just didn't change it. That's how it was there before, and we just never changed it, but we could change it.
Could we just change to say the body of the committee? Does it have to stipulate a number?
No, we could do that, too.
Okay.
You just say, uh, is there, there's some loud noise. We could just say, uh, just the members of the school committee for a term of three years. We don't have to have a number. I mean, it's up to you, whatever you guys want to have.
You're Trista or Ellen? I think we're getting a lot of feedback from your.
I think it's Trista that we're getting feedback from.
Okay. Um, all right, so short of that point, Teresa, any other questions or comments? We can, we can address that when we actually move to vote later on.
No, that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, muted myself. All right, Superintendent's Corner.
Great. Good evening. Just a few things, and we do have a power, a couple Google slides to go through today. And I'm going to push it over to Karen Clifford and Dr. Williams in just a minute. But we had COVID-19 vaccines. We have started with our school nurses. I want to thank East Bridgewater Fire Department. Tim Heron, Chief Heron, reached out to us last week. We've been going to the task force meeting, and on the task force meeting, the chief and I spoke about it. He reached out last week. We've got, we talked to our nurses, and they were all vaccinated on their first dose last week. So that's, that's great to know that we've started with our nurses and other districts are doing that as well. So we're right in line. I do want to say that we have, uh, we have co-authored a few letters to our legislators, our senators, to Governor Baker, to the legislation on getting our teachers and school personnel vaccinated earlier than later. Try to get them in Phase 2, which is coming up next week. The Commissioner did call a meeting for tomorrow at 3:30. So my fingers are crossed that maybe he's going to give us some great news, that maybe we can move some people up in front. We do know that Jay Fallon did receive some notification that some, some of our other certificate area holders from DPH speech and language and occupational therapists will be moved up into that category as well. And that we will try to get them vaccinated as soon as we can, once we start moving with the East Bridgewater Fire Department. So we did send a survey out today to the community. Chief Heron needed to know exactly how many, not, not the, our community, our school community, our teachers, our faculty, our staff, to see who wants to be vaccinated, who is going to want to be vaccinated with us. And so we put that out just to get some numbers, so that when the chief is working with the state Board of Health and our local Board of Health, we can put in that the teachers and the school personnel. Right now, we're over about 350 people that we have. We've put the survey out to all of our EBEA faculty, our staff, our custodians, our COVID monitors, our teacher instructional assistants, our cafeteria workers, our custodians. John Shay, we've done just about everybody to, and central office and just about everybody and the principals. And we will be working on a logistical time and set up and a schedule with Chief Heron and how we would do this, when we would do this. And I think schools are built for that. I think fire departments and police are built for that. We know how to schedule. We know how to logistically move people quickly through lines. And that's what we do on a daily basis. So I look forward to working with the chief on that. And tomorrow Karen and I will be at another task force meeting. And I know that that will be on deck for us tomorrow. So that's good news. Right now, we're at the third or fourth week of February. We're still waiting to hear exactly. And I guess it's about, Karen may even jump on that, that the doses of vaccine that the Commonwealth is receiving on a daily basis or a weekly basis, and how they can get those out. And then it'll go through March. So hopefully, my fingers are crossed that we will be up and, up and running in a couple of weeks on vaccinations. Tonight, and so again, we co-authored some letters. We're asking to be pushed ahead. And we, as I move over to Karen, and we're going to put up a slideshow in a, in a couple of seconds. I just want to say that we did have community testing on January 9th and 10th. It went very well. I want to thank the community. I want to thank the Board of Health, Stumaloy. I want to thank Chief Heron. I want to thank our custodial staff for working on that day, being there for us and setting things up. I know that John Shay helped out in the morning, making sure that they had copiers available for them down in that cafeteria area. So, and it went very, very well. And it worked out very well for the school district. We have, we did work with the EBEA on student learning times. Dr. Williams will talk about that a little bit today on student learning times and what we needed to do to be in compliance with DESI regulations. We did negotiate. We tried to get to, to resolve some of those issues. We did get to NPAS, but we do need to be compliant with DESI regulations. So I have to say that I was in all buildings yesterday. I was in all buildings today. I have seen the increased time for two and a half hours at Central School and the Mitchell School for students at home. And I want to thank the teachers for doing that. I stopped in and saw a few teachers today on their count and planning time. I know it's rigorous. I know that they are planning an awful lot, but we're almost, we're almost there. We're almost, hopefully, as the closer the spring comes, maybe we'll get a little bit of freedom from COVID. I'm hoping, I'm keep, I'm not going to, so tonight, we are going to show you some data that we have been working on. Why some of the reasons we'd like to see some things change in our model. I am asking for, to push into Wednesdays. Right now, our faculty is home remotely on Wednesdays, except for our pre-K and K. The pre-K is there five days a week. We have a couple of classes that are full day. We have some three-day, half-full days. We've got two-day, half-full days. We've got two-day, half-days. We've got a lot of things going down in pre-K, and the kids are doing well. We also have kindergarten. We have an AM and a PM kindergarten. But grades one through 12 are remote on Wednesdays. And we are finding that the human touch is as important or more important at this time for students. And I don't want to change the six feet. I don't want to change the hybrid model. I want to keep the students in Cohort A or Cohort B and go opposite weeks, if we could get them in on Wednesdays, and start marching towards a three-day Cohort A and a two-day Cohort B. And then the following week, a two, a two-day Cohort A to a three-day Cohort B. And it offers our chance for our students to receive services that they might not be receiving on the other days. And I think that you're going to see some of this data that Karen presents today. I've asked Karen to do it because she really works with the numbers on a daily basis. We sat together yesterday and things changed very readily. And, and Dr. Williams also will join in because of our survey results from Panorama. Karen oversees that, our guidance. And John, Jay Fallon jumped in there with our social workers and the, and the students they are working with, our adjustment counselors. And Dr. Williams spoke to the principals with our Panorama surveys. And, and we've just been doing a lot of work on this, on the social, emotional, whether it outweighs our COVID. Our at-risk students are high. And they just are not IEP students. And that's something that is near and dear, I'm sure, to all of us. And we just need to just, just make sure that we're doing the right things for kids and keep them in front of us. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen and Dr. Williams. And Jay, Jay Fallon has a couple of these. I think he's going to jump in there on two slides, just to talk a little bit about the IEPs and those numbers that you're going to see. And just make sure that they're organized in the thought process of what you're seeing. So Karen, you're all set. Thank you.
Okay, everybody see my slides? So we put this, we put this together to, like, update you on where we were from the last presentation. I am going to go back and repeat. Sorry. I'm going to go back and repeat a little bit as far as the DESI guidelines, which date back to July 20th. That the CDC and the DPH recommend six feet of distance between individuals. And the World Health Organization and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommend a minimum of three. DESI recommends that districts aim for six feet of distance where feasible. And when six feet is not feasible, three feet is acceptable. So I just want to point that out. In November, the Baker-Polito Administration had a press release where they updated the metrics for schools and municipalities to be used. Trying to get rid, do you see this thing on my side, too? Trying to get rid of that.
Looks fine from our end.
Okay, so you just see the presentation?
Yep.
So, um, what the press release says is that the updated metrics are to build upon the state's ongoing efforts to refine the data that's reported. And that studies have shown that there is low transmission in schools, even in communities where there are high rates of COVID. So as we know, that East Bridgewater is in the red and has been for a couple of weeks. But our school transmission for students still hovers around the 4% mark. And for staff is around 10%. So our numbers in the schools are not, yeah.
What is the four and 10%? I'm sorry, I just missed, is that, is that the positivity rate?
Yes, that's the number of students in the bill, in the district that are, have shown positive is 4% of the student body. And for the staff, it's 10%. So although, so those are our numbers in the building, and they are not, they are not similar to the numbers out in the community. We're far less. So based on that press release, DESI updated their school guidance to say the schools are operate, are able to operate safely and successfully with in-person learning. Schools in red communities should implement hybrid models while maximizing in-person learning for high-needs students. And fully remote models should be implemented only as a last resort and returned, reopened as soon as possible. If we choose that. So that brings us to the high-needs students. I think Mr. Fallon is going to speak to these next couple of slides, building by building on the IEPs.
Thanks, Karen. So when we looked at our numbers, you know, our most recent four-day numbers, looking at those that you're seeing on these slides, our pre-KK, as Liz said earlier, they're in five days a week. So I didn't account for those numbers. But when we look at grades one and two, there are 34 students in IEPs. We have 12 of them that have been, are remote for, you know, variety of reasons. Most of them are family reasons, medical reasons, those kind of things. So when you look at it, we've got 22 students in IEPs at the Central School. And 21 of the kids are in four days a week. So most, all of our kids at every, at every building, all of our kids have been offered, just about all of our kids have been offered an opportunity through meetings to look at four days a week. Some parents, some parents want to stay remote, and that's fine. That's completely their option. Some parents have chosen to stay with the cohort. And I do know that meetings are still going on. I know there was one student who actually isn't on this list that's been updated at the Junior Senior High. He went for, for days just today, just this morning, but wasn't on the list. Good, Karen. So when you look at the Mitchell School, we have 114 students in IEPs. 14 of them are remote. That's leaving us 100 students in IEPs with 64 of them in four days. And then at the Junior Senior High School, we'll get at 164 students with IEPs. 43 of them are remote, leaving us 121 students, and 71 of those are in four days. So, so just about all of our buildings are 60% for attendance rate on our four days. Like I said, the Junior Senior High, I know there was one meeting today where a student is going to go four days as of that meeting. So we're still continuing to work with those families, still continuing to get kids in. Obviously, our referrals are coming in. They're, they're, they're kind of fast and furious at certain points, but, but they're coming in as well. And as we look at those, we'll certainly have all those discussions with families. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Jay. So that brings us to students at risk for other reasons, such as kin. So I have put together the data for August through January from last school year and this school year. This school year, the major difference that was reported to me was that a little bit more high-profile situations, such as cutting and suicide attempts. In December, we had a few cutting incidences, a couple, a couple of neglects, possible domestic violence. And in January already, we still have one full week. We have two self-harm and three domestic. So this information comes from the counseling staff, the guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, school psychologists. The number of students they've identified, which could potentially be also on an IEP, but that they have identified as at-risk, that they are working with, whether they're at-risk remotely, emotionally, because of the pandemic, because they're only in school two days, varied reasons. But these are students that have increased services this year. So the district shows a total of 494, but that's the grade-by-grade breakdown. So when we look at the district as a whole, we have 21, 16 students in the building, in the district. With 312 on IEPs, which accounts for 15% of the population. We have students on 504s, 86, which accounts for 4%. And we have these students that have been identified at need at 23%. That is identified since the winter break of the students that have just increasingly needed services. And now Dr. Williams will speak a little bit about in comparison to the survey that was done by students and parents in November. Compared to these.
Move to the slide.
Hold, hold on, Teresa. I think Trista was, was going first. Hold on a sec.
Yeah, am I okay with not giving feedback right now?
Yes.
So you, okay. So Karen, I know that number covers the kin's and at-risk kids for other reasons. But I'm also curious, how much data, if any, do we have for kids who are at academic risk? And I know right now, it's not all about academics. There's a socio-emotional piece, and that's far more important than, you know, grades and in school. But the impact on the academic effects of this for kids who are struggling more so? Do we have any data on that, as well as the contingency of kids that are not being reported as a kin's? Because there's no immediate significant risk? But there are other mental health crises going on. Have we been able to identify any of that in our data? Because I would venture to guess that we're much greater than that 23%.
And I would agree with you. And I ask, because it's somewhat subjective, I ask the counselors to really think about those students that are the repeat, the ones that they know right off the top of their head, that they have been working with continuously. I would say that the kin's are not so heavily factored into this 23%, because that's typically a touch base. It's a home situation. It's a touch base, doesn't always require repeated follow-up. Some cases it does, so I don't want to say never. This, I asked the guidance counselors, the behavior specialists and the school psychs to talk about who they met with, whether it was remote for not attending class, you know, all of those different reasons, academic, socio-emotional, connected, connectiveness. Those are the areas that Gina, Dr. Williams, will talk about in this survey, because those are the specific questions that we ask the students and the parents. But I asked the staff, like, who have they, since November? Because the information from the survey was given by name to all of the building principals. And they, the guidance staff is making contact. Some of those issues might have been resolved with just making a relationship. Some of those issues might be ongoing. So I asked in January as a follow-up to see, how many students would you really say are high-risk? I know at the fifth and sixth grade level, the counselor told me that most of the students that are at risk are the ones that are remote. So those are the things, that's the kind of data that we have right now. Dr. Williams will give you more data on those, those other areas. But I will tell you that each building has a meeting with administration, the nurses, and guidance staff to discuss students that are at need or at risk, whether it's socio-emotional, whether it's just, they need a lunch, they need a lunch, or if it is academic. So we are watching that every term, every grading, every progress report. All of that stuff is factored into a student at risk.
Dr. Williams, before you begin, just to remind everybody, progress reports are coming out at Mitchell School. I think Dr. Williams also has some diagnostics on the, some of the assessments that have come out. And she could probably give us some feedback on that. I do know that the high school principal is very concerned about attendance right now. And they are looking at that. I know that he was talking to Mrs. Clifford today about that. They are looking at that attendance. And I know that Dr. Williams is in on that conversation as well. But it's not coming on deaf ears, Trista, that all of this is, it's, it's, it's cyclical for us. It's sort of going around, and we're, we're not just grabbing one thing at a time. It's, it's, we are looking at all of it. I know that Dr. Williams has, has more of that information at her fingertips probably than I do. But I do know that that is on his radar, or on their radar right now, that attendance at the high school, especially at the upper grades and especially period attendance, they're going to be looking at that in the next couple of weeks here. So, Dr. Williams?
Lisa had a question real quick. Teresa, go ahead.
Oh, good. Karen, of the 494, is it suffice to say that some of that is included in the 312 and the 86? I thought that's what you said, but I just want to be clear.
It, it could be. I can't guarantee not. I asked the counselors, because for anybody that's on an IEP or a 504, that should be considered standards, standard accommodations that are being provided. So I asked specifically for people that are not typically on an IEP, that they would not typically have seen in any other year, but students that they are finding are needing additional supports. And as I said before, a lot of them, especially at the Mitchell School, are remote students that are feeling very disconnected and need a lot more support. So it, we have been using our social work interns that we have through North River very well. They're running a lot of remote groups. They're running a lot of remote lessons and having a lot of connection to the remote students to bring them back into, you know, into the building.
All set? Great. So, you know, the, the one positive piece of this is utilizing the Panorama platform. To Trista's point, it has allowed us to capture not only social, emotional data, but as well as the academic. Panorama is a platform for generating surveys, but it's also a warehouse where we can take data from School Brains, which is all academic data, diagnostic benchmark assessments, as well as the social, emotional learning surveys. So when we start to look at students on a profile basis, we can look at both their, their social, emotional data, as well as their academic data, to then see if there's a correlation between the two. Within the survey, we did also ask students about their academic needs. And when we generated the survey for grades three through 12, the students answered on behalf of themselves. For the younger grades, it was the parents that completed the survey. So one of the questions was, are there subjects that you need help with? And about 35% of the students in grades three through 12, which I think it came out to about 350 students, indicated needing help in either one or more academic areas. So it was nice that it was an opportunity for students to also advocate. So it was nice that it was an opportunity for students to also advocate for themselves that they're looking for help in particular subjects. And I will say that math tended to be the, the subject that was in most need for students who completed that part of the survey. The other three major questions that were asked to determine who are the students we need to be targeting? And certainly there's a priority order, because within the survey, they were asked at to what degree, you know, significant, somewhat significant, you know, they were feeling quite confident or extremely confident. So for those students that said that they have no connectedness to an adult or no connectedness to a peer, cer- certainly they came up as, you know, in a color coding system, they came up red on our radar. And unfortunately, we had students that were indicating no connection in both areas, adults and peers. So then our counselors could look at that data as to, okay, we need to really make sure, like, we get to this kid ASAP. They're indicating no connectedness to both peers as well as adults. But the, the information that was given to the counselors that were used to identify who they should be touching base with and meeting was generated from the survey so that they could look at who's struggling academically, who's feeling the lack of connectedness to adults in the school, who's feeling a lack of connectedness to their peers? And then there was also the opportunity for students to indicate if they want somebody to follow up with them. Now, our plan all along was that councils would be feeling, would be following up, but they might have done it in a different way, going to the students' teachers or, or providing supports in a more discreet way. However, giving students the opportunity to communicate to us, I would like somebody to follow up with me. We had a hundred and forty-nine students in grades three through twelve who put on the survey, yes, please have an adult, a counselor or a teacher follow up with me. And I think that was pretty significant, because most often students that age, you know, wouldn't outwardly say, I need to talk to somebody, I need an adult to, to help me with what I'm struggling with at this time. So as, as Karen mentioned, the day-to-day interactions that counselors and the social workers are having with students, it's the data from these surveys as well as communication from the teachers, because certainly teachers are getting that sense, and parents that continue to notify us when they know that their, their child is struggling, whether it's a hybrid student or a fully remote student. So this was really important information for us to generate. We did this survey back in November, once we were in school for, you know, a good couple of months. And then we'll be coming back to this early spring again to generate another survey so that we can look to see how things have changed for students and the significance of the concerns at that point in time.
Gina, can I ask you a quick question? With the, the last survey, and I'm trying to remember, maybe two months ago, at this point, we, we look, you had collected some data from a survey, and we saw some patterns, I believe that the Mitchell School, that they felt a bit more disconnected, if I'm remembering, than the junior, senior high school students. When you look from this data, do you see similar patterns by schools? Or did you just look kind of in aggregate from grades three to twelve?
So this is the same survey data. We're just utilizing that same survey in all different ways we're responding.
Okay, great. Sorry. Thank you.
That's all right.
So, so that's where we're at. And now we're going to talk about additional measures that we've taken above the measures that we started at the beginning of the school year to reopen. We've had district-wide as well as building-based health and safety meetings, safety group meetings. And the district-wide safety, health and safety group has requested that we participate in the pool testing that the governor has introduced, the governor and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. So to that end, I have participated in webinars on January twelfth, January twenty-second today, and I will again on Friday, the twenty-ninth, to learn about the steps that we need to take. We have filled out an application to participate. We have signed, the superintendent has signed our letter of assurances to participate in the pool testing.
Karen, just benefit of the community, could you explain what pool testing is and why it's beneficial to us?
So the pool testing is a, a new mitigating measure developed by this, the governor, as well as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed to help schools continue in-person, to get further in-person, and to demonstrate that the students are not the super-spreaders, that we are able to keep the school safe, separate from whatever, whatever is happening in the community. So the way it works is that every person in the building will be tested every week. And it is a rapid antigen test that has shown in a, a couple of different surveys to be almost as reliable as the PCR test, which everybody knows, well, not everybody knows, maybe. The PCR test takes between three and five days to get the results back. So usually, an individual's in quarantine for that length of time. The pool testing, because you're combining eight to ten individuals into one sample, it can, it's a faster turnaround, it's more cost-effective. And so if a test, if the pool comes back negative, all eight to ten people are considered to be negative. If the pool comes back positive, all eight to ten people have to come back and individually retest. So they're not considered positive, they're not quarantined until we get a hard positive for them, but they would have to just come back the next day for an individual test. Is that? More?
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions on this? Because I think parents will want to know, you're saying everyone in each building is testing? So that's students and staff?
Everybody. So it's administrators, it's secretarial staff, it's custodians, it's cat workers, it's
And do parents have the right to opt out of that testing?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we have, the next thing that we have to, first thing we had to do was apply. Second thing we have to do is now we have to get accepted and partnered with a lab. And then once that happens, we can send out a permission slip for parents. And at any step in this process, we can determine not to pursue, or we can continue to pursue. But we really need to have eighty percent participation amongst a building in order to be able to pursue. And we can do one building and not the other building. So if we get eighty percent participation in one building, we can continue with that building. And if we get eighty percent at two buildings, and we could add a third building at a later time, if it takes us a little longer to get the participation rate up. But it's very non-invasive. There is information that is, it's, it's, it's a much simpler test, it's much quicker, it's equally as effective, it's done right in the classroom, it's done. Students in grades two through twelve are able to self-administer. They don't, it doesn't even have to be administered for them.
My, my biggest, I have two concerns with this. One is the rapid antigen has a forty percent false negative rate. So we just need to be mindful of that.
So this particular, if I can, if I can respond to that, this particular test that has been approved has gone through, and it shows to be ninety-eight percent accurate as a PCR in individuals that are heavily infected. So as you, as you understand the virus, when people are heavily infected, they have a lot of symptoms. So it's very easy to pick up the positive. For the student, for the individuals that are moderately impacted, the effectiveness is eighty-five percent. And for the student or the individuals, I'm sorry, I keep saying students, but any individual, because it's our staff also, the positivity rate is, or the effective positive rate is sixty-six percent. They are considering that to be very successful, because the student or the individuals with a low percentage of the virus would either be considered to be at the end of an infectious period, so not infectious, or not infectious. So those, those, those numbers are pretty solid for this particular test, not just any. It's the Abbott-Bynix Now antigen test.
What one are they using, Karen?
The Abbott-Bynix Now is what it's called. And so they will provide us with the tests, as well as the follow-up test for when people have to come back for their individual.
And can staff opt out?
Yes, but it, the request came from the Health and Safety Board, so I'm the Health and Safety Committee, so I would, I would hope that they wouldn't, but yes.
I, I agree, but just, I mean, I mean, just asking. And we don't have any
Again, we would be looking for eighty percent participation in a building. Otherwise, they said that our data would not be viable.
And then finally
Effective in mitigating the spread, if we don't have at least eighty percent.
And finally, and this isn't, nobody's going to have an answer now, but if Liz or John can figure this out, is I know the state will pay for the first six weeks. So if we're going to do this and continue past the first six weeks, how do we pay for it? And what, you know, what is the cost and how do we pay for it? I know nobody is that now, nor would I expect you to.
Well, we, we, we have a plan, because we've spoken about it. We knew that it was six weeks. The EBA did push this towards me. Karen and I were ahead of this. Ahead of this, I think about a week before the EBA, then it came out to everybody. The EBA says, we'd like to be in part of the pool testing. We were already ahead of it, we signed up for it. We're now in the first, while we hope to get into the first cohort, and we should find out. John and I met today on the assurances, and after the first six weeks, how would we pay for it and would go forward? There will be another boost of COVID money. We are hearing about that, and I do think we have funds in the district that would be able to continue this to go. We feel very, we feel that this is an appropriate avenue to go down if we're going to try to get kids back to school as soon as possible. And I think John and I can come up with some creative ways, but I also think that there is another COVID push coming. And that's what we're hearing from the governor's office and as we're moving forward, so.
Thanks, Liz. And I think pool testing is great, too. I'm, I'm a little concerned about, but I want to look up that Abbott-Bynix. I just want to make sure that we don't get in for six weeks and then have to stop. So I just want to make sure we have that covered before we get in, instead of once we're in.
Agreed. I think that's part of the assurances that Liz mentioned, that we have to commit to that. So those are the measures that were taken. We're now at our proposal for in-person on Wednesdays. As Liz mentioned before, we would hope to start on February third and have the teachers return to the building and do a full day of remote instruction, and then start on February tenth, having Cohort A in full day in-person. Then we have the winter recess vacation, and then we would go to Cohort B, and then on and on in through March, until, until we get to the next phase. In, in doing that, all teachers, staff and students will remain at six feet distance, even though Desi's recommendation is three to six feet. It will help us increase our learning time for students and meet the Desi requirements, and Dr. Williams will speak on this. More in depth?
Thanks, Karen. So as we have talked about before, as of January nineteenth, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has proposed a mandate for increased student learning time for those districts that are in a hybrid learning model, which we are. They are proposing or expecting thirty-five hours of live synchronous instruction for students over a ten-day period. I think I mentioned before, they use it as a ten-day period, because some school districts alternate their cohorts, one week on, one week off. So for us, we were averaging under the thirty-five hours when we submitted our schedules at the beginning of the year. At the junior, senior high school, we were above that at thirty-nine hours over a ten-day period. But at Central and Mitchell School, we were under that with only twenty-nine hours. So we recently, as the superintendent mentioned, we recently renegotiated our memorandum of agreement. And at this point, as of January nineteenth, all students in learning in a hybrid model. And the reason why they use students that are in the hybrid is because that's the model of the district, and all students have an opportunity to be part of our hybrid model. All students receive thirty-five hours at Central School and Mitchell School over a ten-day period. And the way we get to the thirty-five is they get five hours of instructional time on the two days that they're in, and they get two and a half hours of synchronous instruction on the Wednesday and the two days that they are working remotely. So over a ten-day period, that gets us to the thirty-five hours. And the way the junior, senior schedule has worked since the original agreement was that fifty percent of their class twice a week, which gets them to the thirty-nine hours. So it's, you know, nice to be able to say that we did not look at this as an average across the district. We felt it was important for equity that all students get the thirty-five hours, and that's why it's an expectation at all three buildings that they're at a minimum of thirty-five hours over the ten-day period of the time span.
Gina, can I ask the staff a question?
Sure.
For remote kids, what happens to the five, or the ten hours that the other kids, the in-school students get? Or, or does remote not count in these learning hours? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do know what you're saying. So what the expectation is, it's based on the model the district has chosen. So knowing that all students have an opportunity. So if families have chosen remote, then they may not be at that thirty-five hours, because the students are not getting any of the in-person time. So the expectation put out by the state is that whatever model the district has chosen, that indicates what all students have available to them. If we were a fully remote district, which I know there are some urban districts that are still working fully remote, the requirement would have been forty hours over the ten-day span. So you're right, there is a discrepancy between what our hybrid students get for live instruction and what our remote students, but the obligation is that, what is it that we need to provide to all students? And then it's a choice of the family what they take advantage of.
One more question?
I'll let you finish.
And you might not know the answer to this, Gina, and you don't have to answer tonight. But if all of the students who, who went remote, who are remote, decided to come back to a hybrid, would we have a space issue?
So the, the state does allow us a timeframe. You know, the expectation that is that if there's a request to come back, that we fulfill that request and giving us time to do that. I know that at the schools, they have been mindful of that. So I don't want to say that, you know, automatically we have space for every single student who's working remote right now, but it is the obligation of the district that we work through that to provide that opportunity for students. It could look like, you know, maybe a change of a placement if we got down to large numbers of our remote students coming back. But overall, we have very few numbers of remote students. So we, we are aware, and the principals are all aware, and keeping in mind that they could have students returning, and to keep that in mind as they're filling seats and in space in their rooms.
One of the things that I've heard from a couple of younger, parents of younger kids, and I don't think this is a compelling reason to not do Wednesdays, but I think it's something we need to just be mindful of, is childcare being very difficult to arrange on a staggering basis on Wednesdays. So if a parent were to elect to keep their child in the current setup of two days in and three days out for childcare purposes, would that reflect poorly against the child, or would we take that into account, or how would we handle that?
So, you know, to speak to that, I mean, right now, they're obligated for childcare fulfillment every Wednesday. So this actually lessens their, their need for childcare, because their child's accounted for every other Wednesday. But, you know, certainly if it becomes a balancing act for families to have their student in that every other Wednesday, just like any day. You know, a, a parent can choose to keep their child remote, and they would just have to indicate that they're going to be working remotely so that they're marked remote present as opposed to in-person absent. So certainly if it's a family's choice to do that, they can.
But on Wednesdays, you mean, they wouldn't have to go fully remote?
Right. No, on the Wednesdays.
Okay. Thank you. Um,
Um, Liz, I had a quick question. So just to go back to, um, you know, because I think vaccines very much tie into the whole conversation about reopening and getting people back together. So just so I understand, so, so, you know, I understand that we don't have a data, but we have kind of a, an outline for a plan for vaccinating our staff. So we sent out a survey to the staff or that's in the works?
I'm sorry, I, uh, misspoke. My, I was told that it went out this afternoon. I thought that we had sent it out. Um, Barbara just texted me and said that it did not go out this afternoon. It will be out in the morning. Uh, we had, um, fine tuned it. I thought that it had gone out, um, but it did not. It will go out in the morning. So I apologize for that.
Well, that's fine. That, that, that wasn't actually my question. So is.
So when the survey goes out, I will have, is, you're asking if we will have more data on this and how will we know? Yeah. So, uh, we've asked for the, you know, the staff, who they are, what their name is, um, are they, and do they intend to take the vaccine or not? At that time, we will know who they are. We will be able to provide, uh, the chief with how many numbers, um, that we have and let him know. The, the, the reason that we do, that we do require the names is so that as the testing gets closer, if Liz Lego didn't sign up, we're still gonna ask the chief to order extra and so will, you know, Karen Clifford will push Sue Malloy at the Board of Health and say, you know, could we get, you know, twenty-five extra? So that if Liz Lego shows up and says, you know what, I, I should have voted or I should have said, I want the vaccine. I wasn't really sure. My doctor said I should get it. Uh, we'll have it and we'll be able to give it. So we are looking at that. So I'm hoping it's not, this isn't, we're not, uh, we're not forcing anybody. If you don't wanna take it, we, we certainly understand everybody has the right to refusal. Um, we're, we're looking at it more for, I think people want, I know this is the new normal they're saying, but I think people wanna get back to school, whether it's teachers, whether it's staffing or whether it's students. And I think that if we can provide a vaccination, if we can provide the vaccine and whether we have to call the day, it's superintendent's day, or it's a Saturday morning, or whatever the case is, we'll get it done. And I think logistically between the fire chief, uh, the fire department and the schools, we can, I think we could get it done within, um, a three-hour window.
All right. And, and I agree. I, I think, you know, you know, with, with all the struggles on this, there, there is an avenue to keep people safe, you know, keep our staff, staff safe. And I, I think it's worthy of consideration that once we can take steps to keep our staff safe, where there's so much overwhelming data about that the kids are safe coming into school that, you know, we need to take those two together and make some decisions about how we're gonna handle the rest of the year. So I think the staff vaccination key piece is a very key part to all of this. Um, so thank you.
I, I. Sorry Liz. Um, a question on, do we have an idea of a timeline on a decision about the pool testing and then how does, I know everything is up in the air, but pool testing and vaccinations converge, like, I see Liz shaking her head. I'm sure you've already thought of this, but yeah.
So, uh, we had to get it, we had to get our letter in by Thursday of this week for, to get in, to try to get into Cohort one or A, whatever they're gonna call it, this. Um, and we, they have been, I have to say that his COVID, uh, the, the Department of Ed's COVID response has been very quick. If they're talking about pool testing, or whatever they're talking about, especially with the, uh, the COVID officers, Karen's position, they are very quick to get back to us. So I would, I would say that with the push this week from the Mass Superintendent's Association and many of the, uh, South Shore groups, the North Shore group, uh, the West uh, superintendents and, and my colleagues sending letters to legislation, there's, uh, and getting and trying to push, that's on their desk. For the commissioner call a meeting for tomorrow, I am convinced that it is going to talk about vaccinations and it's gonna talk about the pool testing and where the, where they are and who's going to be pushed in and, and how that'll go. I, I believe that the pool testing, I would probably say that Karen would hear Friday, the day that we have been accepted. Once we're gonna accept it, I will let everybody know and see. And they're going to set it up for us. They're going to say, this is what it looks like. This is the lab. These are the next steps you have to do. And then Karen will reach out to the lab. And hopefully, my hopes are, are that other surrounding districts will be involved with that so that we can start a little colla-, uh, little collaborative ourselves. You know, so when, when the six weeks is up, we're working together on, um, you know, getting the testing in and getting the testing out and moving it around a little bit. Uh, so the vaccinations, I can't tell you. I'm hoping that we'll get pushed up, but once I know, I'll let everybody know. And the pool testing, I would say Karen would know by probably Friday or Monday, Tuesday and next week. They are moving very quickly. Um, I got a call from Desi just, uh, last week, just to let me know that it was the first time, um, I think Karen, we had, uh, we came back from school over that, the three-day weekend. I think we had, uh, the five students. We never had five students. And once you, once they see that, they call you immediately. And Karen had already gotten the call, but they called me just on the side, just to say, we hope you know, but, so they are so proactive up there. Uh, they really are trying, um, uh, to get the information out. Uh, we also, uh, John and I, uh, also asked for, um, HEPA filters for the district. They were free HEPA filters and, uh, we received twenty HEPA filters from the Department of Education. Um, John and I were waiting for them today or tomorrow to come in and, and to be deposited, um, in the district. So I mean, they are working hard with us. They are buying in bulk. So, and anything that they bought, we've gone to get. We bought, we got, um, they told me we had twenty-five, twenty-four hundred masks. I sent Doug Ortenzi. No, I sent Ja- Jay Phalen to Fall River and, uh, he picked up twenty-four hundred masks for us two weeks ago. So anytime they're given anything free, we jump on it. Anything that will keep our kids and our faculty and staff safe, we jump on it. They asked us for HEPA filters. I know that John bought, uh, HEPA filters for classrooms and we have several of them and some aren't, have not even been, been put in the rooms yet. And now we have a twenty more and I'm going to ask the principals on Monday to say, if you've asked for one of these, we have them and we're ready to put them up. So, um, anything that anyone has asked for, I think Karen can, John and Karen can both say, anything that has been asked for to keep people safe, we have purchased or we have asked the Department of Education for, and we've received it. I, 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 the only thing that I think that, uh, John Shay would say that he's bouncing his head off any cement uh, walls is trying to get computers, um, or laptops delivered off the barges or getting them off the barges into New Jersey when they didn't have anybody to take them off of the barges, when they didn't have enough workers. So that has held us up. However, at Mitchell School today, I was there. There are new laptops that have been delivered, which has certainly helped out a lot. And the new touchscreens, touch view touchscreens have been delivered or in all the classrooms. We have touchscreens all over the high school, touchscreens all over the Mitchell and Central School now and we got a, I don't know, John thirty laptops on last Tuesday delivered from FedEx. We got some delivered yesterday from FedEx. John's buying laptops every place he can. So, I mean, I know that goes a little off what you were asking Amanda, but anything, we're trying to keep, anything we can get to support the safety and to try to keep us moving. And that's what we're doing. And Tim, I know that was your question.
Okay. Can I ask a couple of questions? Have we, I know we, um, we talk about surveys. And I, I think checking on social emotional and, and students is huge and I love that um, so many felt open to say they were struggling academically. Um, I almost think that it's easy to do it through a survey than to actually in-person ask for help. Um, so I encourage those surveys, but have we all, have we done the same for staff? And, and looked at, you know, maybe bringing in some employee assistance programs to, to, to help them through some of these challenges? Cause I, I know many was struggling.
I'm not laughing, I'm not laughing at your question. Uh, John Shay and I spoke about this this afternoon. Uh, we do have an employee's assistance program here in the district that we, that we have offered to people um, in different avenues. And we also talked about today, uh, John and I and, um, looking at bringing in a psychologist, uh, or a social worker, uh, to, uh, be on staff, for staff, for adults, um, in the district. Uh, we are seeing the need. Uh, but we do have an employee assistance program in the district, uh, in the town. And we have had people come in and asked us for it and we also give them the card. Barbara, um, has the card to call, uh, John Shay has offered, uh, the card if people come in and ask us about it. Gina, I'm not sure. I think, uh, Dr. Williams, there is, um, some thoughts on that and some of the professional development has been geared on the adults.
I know that day you did last year on it Gina, was so well received. Maybe if we could figure out a way to make that work in COVID.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the day you did last year in the PD Academy, where there was like yoga and meditation and walks and I, I don't remember all the details. I just remember it was so well received.
It was a full day, healthy day.
Yeah, it was definitely a, a positive one, uh, for staff. So staff members were also surveyed as well. Um, from a, a emotional standpoint as well as, um, the confidence in the health and safety measures. Um, and that's what we'll be reviewing with the Health and Safety Committee, the District-wide Health and Safety Committee, uh, as well as their, um, need for, uh, supports i- in their teaching. Um, so we did also survey staff. Um, and our last professional development day was specifically for staff on, uh, their own connectedness, uh, knowing how important it is if they're helping students to feel connected, they certainly need a sense of connectedness for themselves. So, uh, Denny Ha- Howley, a licensed, uh, social worker who does a lot of professional development through North River Collaborative. She, um, was our presenter for, uh, January PD and then our February professional development coming up. Um, is, the presenter is, uh, Carrie Stack from the Say Yes Institute. And she will be, uh, focusing our professional development all around, uh, social, emotional, uh, connectedness, uh, for staff as well.
That's awesome Gina, thank you. And just,
You're welcome.
Have we talked to staff about adding the Wednesdays and is there any concern or reservation, um, amongst anybody for admin, teachers, whomever?
I, the Wednesdays was, uh, in the original MOA. Uh, we need to continue to talk about it, but, uh, it was in the original MOA. It was, it was, uh, a sort of a trade-off and I think many districts did it. We traded it off to get kindergarten or we traded it off to get a pre-K in or kindergarten. And that's what we did. Uh, because we knew that our, our, a, a six-year-old cannot get themselves up on a computer. It's just, it's just not gonna happen and they need constant help and support. And so we went in that way and we said that people could stay home on Wednesdays. And I think Wednesdays have worked well. I think our teachers have done well. But we still have, uh, we, I still have concerns for that. Some districts, some teachers and faculty and staff go in on Wednesdays and the students are remote. Other districts, uh, faculty and staff stay home and kids are remote. I'm looking at, i- if we're gonna take baby steps and we're gonna try to get them back, this was one way to do it. We're not adding anything. We're not taking anything away. We're still teaching. We're still interacting with students. It's just another day that services can't be provided in the schools. And as much as I am the academic leader, as much as I am the social leader, uh, social emotional leader or the judiciary of the district, we have more kids needing free and reduced lunch. We have more kids needing to see our nurses and social workers. We have, um, we're trying to, we're trying to keep kids plugged in to education and plugged in to just life with us. Um, and so that's really the reason that I'm pushing for this. And I, I, you know, I, I, that's why I'm asking for some leeway on the in-person. Um, it's still, we're phasing it in. We're not asking to go from here to, to bring everybody in. Um, I don't, I have, I have not once hid behind that I don't want all kids in. Love to get them in on Wednesdays, stay in the cohorts, six feet. Um, and I think it was, uh, what was it, uh, on the October twenty, uh, October twentieth or twenty-first, Karen, we, we gave our first round of our phases. We start at six feet, then we go to four and a half feet. Then we go, or, you know, whether it's six feet, five feet, you know, then we were gonna go six feet, four and a half feet, three feet, and then we get them all in. We've done everything possible to get kids back in, whether on an IP, a five oh four, or just at risk. I can tell you this, without talking about who, who the teachers are, at Central School, they are moving desks and bookcases and everything they possibly can out of their rooms to bring more students in. We have average class sizes of fourteen right now. They are concerned, our teachers are concerned that our children are lacking in reading, writing and math skills and that they are sliding on the assessments. And they are nervous. They're nervous about their own, wait a minute, wait, hold on Teresa, please. They're nervous about their own goals. We have teachers that have never, that have always been able and are champions for kids and they're nervous. So they're not gonna be able to make their own goals for their, for their students in their classroom. At the Mitchell School, grades three through six, I was over there today. I saw the rooms. We've got great big sizes and we still have lots of space in those rooms. Uh, Mr. Jen Thomas's Dupre are doing a great job getting kids back. It looks like there's lots of room. There's not. There's six feet. We have we've got a inch by inch is a cinch, I guess, and yard by yard is hard. I'm ready to go inch by inch. We can get them back in on Wednesdays, give them one more day and then we'll go inch by inch to go a little bit further, a little bit further, whether it's five feet, whether it's five and a half feet, five feet, four and a half feet, four, three and a half feet, three, something. Um, I know that we see things coming in from the school committee, from parents and this and that, uh, and, and advocating for different things or, or don't bring us back or, or please let us stay remote. But our principals, myself, are getting lots and lots of emails. Please help us. Please help us get our kids back. And that's all I'm trying to do is trying to figure out a way to give a little bit more support. One more day a week, use it as a full day, get the kids back in. And then that at least gets us through February while we wait to get this vaccination. And then maybe at the beginning of March, maybe we get a little freedom with this vaccination and people feel a little bit better about coming in and maybe get to four and a half feet someplace along this line. And that's all, that's, that's, I think that's what we're just trying to say today. I'm sorry Teresa.
That's okay. First of all, I totally support the Wednesday thing. So don't, don't think that I don't. Fourteen at Central, is that in a cohort or is that the class size?
That's a class size.
So a cohort is roughly seven. Give or take.
No, that would be, that would be the number of students in the room.
In the room.
A and B. Not, not necessarily, because some of the students are in four days a week.
All right. But you, I mean, assuming it even split, a class, a full class is fourteen, a cohort is seven.
Well, I think the original class size was seventeen or eighteen.
Well, our average, her average class sizes, depending on the room, are between eighteen and twenty-two. Gina, Gina might have a better, uh, grasp on that.
I was just shocked that they were fourteen. That's why I was trying to figure out. I was just surprised they were that low.
I think she's saying fourteen on any given day, but when you combine the two cohorts plus four-day-a-week kids, it's about twenty, twenty.
I, I think that, that, the, one of the issues that we did see, and I think this is where teachers get nervous and principals get nervous and we're getting nervous as administrators is that y- you have a classroom of fourteen and a class size of seventeen. Three kids are sitting at home wanting to get in and we can't get them in to the central. And I know for a fact, I, we, Karen was there the other day. We, I know for a fact, we have a teacher who's moved everything possible out of their room trying to get those three in. I know that, um, you know, Dr. Williams has, uh, a, a better vantage point of the Central School because she was there so long. They are looking at every possible nook and cranny to get, I mean, you got a class size of seventeen, fourteen are in. And I'm a parent of the three kids that are sitting home knocking on the door saying, please, Mrs. Byrne, get me in. And Mrs. Byrne is trying to figure out a way to get them in. So that's, that's something that I think is near and dear to me right now, is once Wednesdays goes, if we have to go K, then one, then two, I know, I know for a fact, I'm telling you right now, Hanover is in kindergarten through second grade, less than six feet, down to three, and they are all in. And I'm just saying that because I know that. And it's not East Bridgewater, that's Hanover. East Bridgewater is a different cat, get it. I'm just saying that the, that the children in those grades, PK, K1 and 2, we're seeing less contract, contact, we're seeing less kids getting sick. We really haven't had any. I, I mean, Karen, you might want to jump in, but that would be the route, Wednesdays, get them in, get them a little bit more time with us, and then maybe start later down the road, get kindergarten in. Then go to first grade, then go to second grade, then go to third grade. So I mean, that, I mean, there's other phases that we can go in. I mean, we, our first phase that we gave you on the 21st, that's pretty close to whatever. You know, we're, we're not working on ourselves. I mean, working all by ourselves. We're working with other districts to see what they're doing. Ducksbury is looking and going up February, first week of February with their elementary. So we, and I think Karen would tell you, as COVID officers across the state is looking at that K through 6 grouping. And then we'll go from, but that's, yeah, just, I mean, that's about the Wednesdays and
That, that, Liz, that was totally, and Tim and I have talked about this offline. I think as we move forward in this, definitely you start
Yep.
K to 2, 3 to 3, 4, 5, 6, and they'll work your way up because the risk is lower.
Right.
For the kids, and presumably the staff. And, and I guess one thing I would say is you look at this vaccination, and I don't know how many can be done at a time or whatever. I guess I have two comments on that. One is, maybe you look to prioritize the in order, the Central Mitchell High School. I don't know. Not my, not my dig, just a suggestion. The other thing with vaccinations in terms of scheduling, as we get to dose 2, is we may want to schedule those for Friday, just saying, for the people who do get side effects, which some will. But so you haven't, you haven't had any major objections from staff on this Wednesday night? And whether you did or not is irrelevant. I just want to know to, to be prepared for the backlash.
Yes. Well, I mean, I don't think there is any backlash. I think that we, 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 we used it in an, on an MOA. We, we wanted to get kindergarten back, that we traded, and we allowed faculty to stay home. And, but we do have kindergarten teachers in, and staff in. And we do pay, we do pay extra for that of two and a half hours for common planning time that they are missing. And we, we chose to do that because the early childhood experts in Central Office and at Central School felt that that was the most needed area. And so we went for kindergarten. If I had mine, if I could have done it all, I would have said, we're going kindergarten, full day, right off the bat. But I understand where we're at. But yeah, I think the elementaries need to, I mean, that's the way. Will we hear about Wednesdays? Yes. However, we do have, we do have the right as the district to move into in-person. Let me say that we're going in-person, but still in the hybrid model on Wednesdays, on opposite Wednesdays, using a cohort A, cohort B, not less than six feet. I don't have any, I don't have any problems doing that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna play games and ask you to give me the green ticket, the golden ticket, and say, yes, go ahead, Liz, in-person, and then I'm going to bring everybody back. I would never do that. I would hope that the faculty wouldn't and the staff wouldn't think I would do that. I just want to see kids and staff back. And the kids need to come back. You know, they, they need to come back. I don't know any other way to say it. And, but I think that if we can get these Wednesdays, and if it's not Wednesdays, then we stay with the model that we're in. I, I work for the will of you. If that's what you would like, I will wait for the first vaccinations to the end of February, and then we'll start with maybe go to kindergarten and leave the Wednesdays alone. I'm just, I'm just thinking of how, how else can we get more time with kids?
So Liz, that was going to be my follow-up question. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you have a, an approximate date in your head for when you expect to hear on when vaccinations of staff could happen? Like, are you thinking a week from now, you might know, a month from now?
I think tomorrow, Karen and I will hear from Chief Heron, and he'll let us know a little bit tomorrow morning. And then we have the commissioners meeting at 3:30. And I think we're going to hear that there's been some movement. I think that there's a lot of pressure on the governor at this time to get, to get kids back to school. And I think that the only way you can do that is vaccinate these teachers. They're first responders. They're, they're, they're in these, they're in schools every day. So I would say within a week or so, yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to say, I have a couple of quick comments, then if any of the rest of the committee wants to speak on it too, that, that I, you know, my, I, first of all, Liz, I appreciate all this information, and I know, you know, this is a lot, and I know that you put a lot of thought into this. And, and very honestly, my opinion on opening the schools has evolved since the beginning of the year. I think I, like a lot of other parents and a lot of other teachers, were fearful of what reopening the school looks like. I was nervous. I'm nervous about, and I still am. I don't mean to see, say that I'm thinking everything's great now. You know, I, I'm very nervous about COVID cases everywhere. You know, I, I think this is a really dark time for this, this pandemic right now. But there is overwhelming, overwhelming evidence that schools are not spreaders, that, you know, kids and staff may be getting COVID, but they're not really giving it to each other. And that, you know, I, bar, now that there is a vaccine, now that there's a solution, now that there's a plan for how to address this, my position on reopening is evolving, and I feel far more comfortable about talking about it now than I did in October, November, December. You know, I, I think that, you know, you said our teachers, our staff, they are frontline workers. They're absolutely frontline workers. They're dealing with hundreds of kids coming from hundreds of houses and backgrounds every single day, and they don't know what they're getting. And they're in close contact with these kids, and, and they're putting themselves out there. And we do have a responsibility as a district and a committee to protect our employees as well as our kids. And, you know, I think that that is absolutely part of the equation. We're here for the kids first, but we have to be mindful of the safety of our employees as well. So I, so I, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we talked, you know, as a committee about that, you know, we wanted to hear, there was a lot of information tonight that we haven't heard yet, that I think we want to take some time to let it sink in. And, you know, if we have more questions, to be able to come back to you with them. I also think the public should speak on this. You know, we, we wanted to have tonight's meeting in person. We had to go remote. I, I feel very strongly that before we make decisions to bring kids back to school, even if it's at the same six, six-foot spacing, the people should be heard from. You know, we have a right, the public has a right to talk about this. So, you know, I want to, I want to move on this. I'm very, I'll be very honest. I'm clear, I'm in favor of it right now, but I want to, I want to give it the due process to make a thoughtful decision that is well-informed, has the committee have time to stew over this, and have the public a chance to talk on it. So I thank you for all this. I, I'm excited about the idea of it. And then, once we do that, I agree with Teresa. I, I'm supportive of the idea of bringing kids back, starting at the lower levels, getting kids back into school. You know, we have a plan to keep our adults safe. It's time to start talking about bringing the kids back. So.
Would you, would, would we want to consider having a meeting next week to address this, or just wait? I, I don't know when our first, next meeting is. I'm assuming.
From today, I want to hear from Liz back about the vaccination plan. So I don't mind doing that. I know I'm available, but let's, let's just, let's hear back from Liz on what the plan is. We can do that if we need to, if people are available, for sure. I don't, I also don't know if there's athletic events. I have no idea how that works, so we'd have to look into that.
Well, not at the moment, Tim.
Yeah, right.
I'm just, just a quick, just a quick one on, just, just to finish up on the, the vaccination, the kids. Just a reminder that when we first started talking about this, we had a couple of times a full auditorium with people. And especially, we, and we also met with Central School parents a couple of times. And a couple of times, we've tried to put these meetings together, and I think we're going to do a Zoom meeting. Gina and I talked maybe about doing like a Zoom meeting on a Friday with Karen Clifford, and, and put it out to everybody, you know, Friday at 9 o'clock this week, next week it'll be at 3 o'clock. And I think a couple of times we've tried it, and it just, for whatever reason, it didn't pan out, and there's, are some teacher, parents that I have said, you know, we'll call you and we'll get together. I do think we'll hear from parents. And I do want to say two things. Number one, I think all of us, but I speak for my staff, the administrators really want to get these kids back and do the best thing that we can for them. The other thing is that we want our, again, we, we absolutely want the vaccination for our, for our teachers. They are, you know, up in front. They are first responders, as far as I'm concerned. And I wish that people would see them as that. And when I say people, I don't think it's the parents. I don't think it's the community. I think it's legislation, these legislators need to see them as first responders. And when you see our seniors come in right now, and the seniors have been coming in, they're a different, different group of kids right now. They are mature. They're happy to be there. They're doing what is asked of them. It really, they are doing a really nice job. And I think we'll see more of that as this goes, as this goes forward. And I think that, you know, the vaccination's one thing, but it's really, we need to get out-of-box things, out-of-box thinking to try to get kids back. And that's, you know, and we have some parents who've called today, Tim, that said to me, I don't care if you can, if, I don't care if my child remains in the same teacher's classroom. I'm begging you, please. I don't care. Find a space for my child. I need help. So that's, I guess, that's where I'm coming from, because that's the call I'm hearing. You know, people can get mad at me, teachers can be upset, but that's the call that I'm getting. And to me, that's, that's, that's heart-wrenching when somebody says, I don't care. They love that teacher, but I don't care. So that's something that just, that's on our minds, and we're just trying to get there. Trista, I know that you were going to speak.
Yeah, Trista, I cut you off earlier. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I just, I, I wanted to generally speak to our committee who's hearing all of this. And I know, you know, we're not voting on it, but just a couple of points to make. It's so easy to look at data points and look at numbers and percentages, but I think we need to do a better job of personalizing this. Whether we have kids, you have kids or not, or they're younger kids or older kids, the data speaks for itself to some point, but it's not all-encompassing, and it doesn't capture every student and their challenges, family-wise, academically, what have you. Our parents are getting frustrated. The majority of parents, based on the surveys, or a larger majority of parents, I should say, want and need their kids back in school. Not everybody does, for whatever the reasons that, you know, that they have, but they have that option to remain remote. But we're approaching a year now, and yes, we have to keep our staff safe 100%. I totally agree, and I appreciate all the efforts that are being made to, you know, really try to advance this in that area and put that in the forefront. But as the committee thinks about the information that's given, think about the kids, and think about, what if this were your kid at risk? And you never expected them to be in this position, or what if they've always struggled and it's been magnified? I think we need to really take a step back and, and understand that, yeah, we can collect data, we can look at numbers, but these are real kids, and they're struggling, and it's been a year, and they're kids. I don't care if they're four, just starting off their school career, or if they're 17, finishing their school career. It's hard for us adults to navigate this, this pandemic world. It's hard for our teachers or staff. It's hard for us as parents, or whatever our role in life is. But these kids, they need to be back in school. And honestly, we will continue to do a disservice if we don't support the efforts of the district in, as long as it's safe and responsible to get our kids back in school. And that's my impassioned comment. So, thank you.
Can I say something? I've been pretty quiet. So I, I'm in agreement with the kids going back on Wednesdays, you know, every other cohort. And, well, I was just curious, is there a reason why we couldn't vote on just the Wednesday piece tonight? Just playing devil's advocate.
You know, you can make, look, I mean, there's nothing to stop me. I'm, I'm one person. I, I had told the committee that we wouldn't because we got the information late, but if there's a motion seconded and we vote on it, then we vote on it. I mean, I didn't want the committee to feel rushed. So there, there is nothing from my end to stop that from happening.
I think, just real quick, it's Rob here. I'm the only one who hasn't chimed in yet to say their opinion, but I'm actually in favor of the Wednesdays as well. So I, I think that everyone has chimed in in one, in one way or another on the matter, so I'd be fine going ahead with the vote.
If I can, if I can, Tim, I think if you would hold off on that for the week and come back with Teresa, I think Teresa asked if we could have a meeting next week and to vote on that, and then I would have, I will have that other information for you.
I would, but, but that's, I appreciate that, Liz.
Someone's got to, I mean, we're going to speak up here, so I'm just telling you, I'll, I'll wait for another week, but let's have it next Tuesday. It'd be, you know, 20 minutes, and you'll have a week to look at that information, and I'll get you the other information tomorrow from the commissioner. And by Friday, Karen, what, don't you think you should probably have something?
I'm hopeful. It sounds like they're going to be quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you hear anything on the pool testing too, Liz, can you get that out to us? I'm really
Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about on the, on the Friday. Tomorrow, we should hear about the vaccination, but the pool testing, I would, I would imagine that Karen would hear whether we've been accepted or not, and what it's going to entail.
All right. I mean, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I'll make it work, because this is really important.
But what we, what we see as this information comes out, we can formulate a plan, and if we need to post a public meeting, we can do that.
Sounds good.
Oh, we post for safety's sake and cancel it.
I would very much, I, I would insist that the meeting be in-person with people having a chance to speak if we did it.
I agree. I agree. I mean, I, I do believe that, I mean, and I also believe that, I mean, I reached out to maybe 10 or 12 different parents, and, you know, all were supportive with some questions. And again, it's the questions that I can't always necessarily answer, which is why I, I like the, the ability to have the public comment. I completely support it. I just, I just, I think that additional information would be nice, and just giving the people the opportunity to speak. And, you know, in the meantime, Liz, too, maybe you can get some more data, not for next week, but for the next time we meet on, you know, a staggered plan of, of by grade versus kind of a throw it all at once.
We have that. We just, we're just holding out. We're just waiting to get some more support. But I, I want to make sure that we implore the parents. If we're going to give, if we're going to wait a week, and we're going to get some more information, then they either need to contact us by, via the email, or come to the meeting to do a public comment. And Tim and us, I, I definitely believe in our community. I definitely believe in people that have the right to come and speak at any time, and I'm there, so I'm going to be at the meeting.
Yep.
Liz.
And
But, but they got it, but they need to come because this is about their kids, so they need to come to the meeting.
And honestly, I, I, I want, you know, for those that are concerned, we will hear you. For those that want it to happen, we'll hear you. But I want, you know, I, I just, this is a big decision. These types of decisions are big decisions, and I do not believe the committee should make them in a vacuum, so.
I agree, Tim. Liz, in, as we move forward, and we may have this, and if we do, you can just direct me to it. Like, say, first and second grade, what, what would the spacing look like if we were to bring all of 1 and 2 back, you know?
Yep. Where, where
Something like that when we did the task force, but
Yeah. We know the numbers. Kate has that. It's, it's definitely, it's to bring, to have a full classroom in, you're looking at three feet or under for all of the tables and things that she has. Like, right now, she has just desks, mostly desks in there, but they like the tables and the, the round tables, and the square tables, and the octagon tables. But if we had to move, if we had to have just desks, you're looking at three feet or less at Central. But we'll get those numbers for you, and I'll get that data for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments or comments before we move on?
Yeah, I'm done, so I'm going to stop sharing the screen, but I want everybody to know that this PowerPoint will be posted Yeah, I'm done, so I'm gonna stop sharing the screen, but I want everybody to know that this PowerPoint will be posted on the website as well as will be emailed to the school committee.
Karen, can Dr. Williams just bring up the flu vaccination for a minute?
Yeah, I see that that is on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I mean, it's right there, so I figured she could just jump on it now.
Good.
Yeah, so I can bring it up, I know we spoke at the last meeting because we were getting ready to send a notification out to families because um. Earlier in the year, uh, DPH and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education were making it a requirement for all students to be vaccinated to maintain enrollment. Uh, however, as of January fifteenth, they have backed off of that requirement, um, and they're attributing that to. Uh, mild seasonal flu, uh, the high numbers of people who have had the, the flu vaccination. And all the measures that have been put in place with COVID with the distancing and the mask wearing, uh, that they no longer have. Uh, the concerns, uh, and the urgency to have the enforcement of the flu vaccine, so. We do appreciate that over seventy percent of the student population has received the flu vaccine. Um, but it will not be a requirement and those students that have not had the flu vaccine. Uh, will be able to maintain their enrollment in school, uh, without any, uh, consequences.
Well, we certainly encourage the flu vaccine for all who are interested, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Uh, thank you, the only thing else I have is, um. I have a letter that Sue Leighton from the Central School, our music teacher. Um, has asked, uh, this was her last year and she would like to retire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one and um. I think that's wonderful, I wish you the best, uh, moving forward. Uh, I also like to congratulate Carrie Tucker on being chosen to serve as the Southeast Area Co-Director. Uh, the twenty twenty one Executive Board of the Massachusetts School Library Association, MSLA. So congratulations Carrie and thank you for continued support, um, with the librarians and libraries for students across Commonwealth. I'm good, thank you.
All right, um. So, uh, we are going to reports and discussions, so we just got a report on the influenza vaccine, so we'll move on to update on the budget, John. You're up.
Hi, Tim, and everybody, Tim, I have an hour and a half presentation, do you want me to cut it short a little bit?
No, take your time, spread it out. Speak slowly.
Oh, there's, uh, the two pages that I provide, uh, every, uh. Every two meetings are, are in your package, um, just to give you an update of where we are at in this year's budget. Revolving fund balances, I'll go through that one first, uh, briefly. Um, we're, we're still, uh, holding, holding steady, we're still pretty consistent, uh, given everything that's going on. I think you'll see in the revolving fund and the, um. The operating budget, uh, worksheets, uh, with everything that's going on, I think we're doing, doing well. Um, there are a couple of areas, this preschool, uh, you can see that's in a negative balance right now. Um, that will be, uh, that won't be in a negative balance at the end of the year, uh, we're still waiting to find out how much, uh. If any more grants will be coming in. Um, that we can allocate some of these salaries to, because we had to increase staffing. In preschool to cover, uh, social distancing, so. Uh, when, when these grants come in, we'll be able to allocate some of those costs over there, so that won't be in a negative balance at the end of the year. I mentioned before and after school, um, that has, uh, from last month, it's, it's remained pretty steady to this month. Um, I know Gina and Lisa Verasso have been, uh, doing some work in that area and I know, uh, a lot of the, uh. Some of the hours have been cut down in that area, uh, regarding staffing. Um, so we are, uh, we are monitoring that account, uh, with the revenue and the expenses, uh, to ensure that we will, uh. We will still have a balance at the end of the year, I know athletics were brought up in the past, the athletic account. Um, the fees were decreased to two hundred dollars, but we are seeing. A decrease in expenses, uh, some of the, a lot, a bunch of games are getting canceled, so we're not having, uh, referees or busing. Uh, for the athletic events, um. Other than that, circuit break is holding steady, school choice, uh, it, it is, uh, excellent. School building rental continues to remain at a consistent level. Are there any, uh, any questions on this worksheet?
Just one quick one, John. Um, my memory is getting old, the reduction in before and after school care from the prior year, that was probably construction cost, right, for the new space?
A lot of that, a lot of that, uh, was for the construction costs, um. Some of the construction costs, uh, fell under the CARES Act, but the, the cost that would be for the CARES Act fell under this, it also, uh, is it, uh. But part, part of it is due to increased staffing and, uh, the, uh, reduction in the number of kids due to social distancing.
We're, we're still not renting out the buildings, are we?
No. Nope. I'll step with that one. All right. Moving on, the operating budget, uh. Comparison of this year at January twenty first to last year at January twenty first. In the non-salary line, we'd appropriation of three point three million. Uh, we have total, uh, expenses when you include encumbrances or, or those bills that are going to be paid. We have an available balance of five hundred and twenty one thousand, last year at this time, we had an available balance of two hundred and thirteen thousand. So that is great news. The salary line, uh, is, it's a little misleading, you'll see we have an available balance this year of nine point eight million. Uh, last year we had an available balance of ten point three million. Um, the one thing to realize that last year at this time, there was, there was one less payroll compared to this year. So we, we are, uh, if you add in about six hundred and fifty thousand, we're, we're, we're pretty much right on with the available balance, uh, last year to this year. And I have projected out the rest of the year. And barring any, uh, significant, uh, changes, uh, FMLAs or anything like that. Uh, we will, uh, we will meet our salary budget, we should meet our salary budget. Any, any, uh, questions on, on that, this worksheet?
None from me, anyone else? John, beautiful work as well.
To, tomorrow's the big day, the, the governor's budget is supposed to be coming out. So all the town administrators and business managers are all sitting on the edge of their seats waiting for that to be published.
I'm sure they'll be rich as gore for our school district.
You won't sleep a wink tonight, John.
Well, I, there was an article in the Herald, uh, a couple of days ago that said, um. He's still going to fund, um. All the increases.
The Student Opportunity Act?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I heard, I heard three and a half percent of general, uh, unrestricted local aid for his commitments, I heard the same thing, John, on, on WBC.
It's lost to pass the legislature though, right?
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, we're seven months away from. Or maybe even longer.
Excellent job, John, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. Oh, I, it's, Liz, do we want to talk about the finance committee quick, the budget meeting? We, uh, we met this week, last week, last week with, uh, our liaison for the finance committee presented, uh. What we presented to the, uh, school committee budget subcommittee, so we're still, uh. We're still tweaking, uh, the budget and we'll probably be ready to meet, uh, again with the budget subcommittee, uh, soon. But the, I think the meeting with the, uh, town's finance committee, uh, liaisons went well.
Great. Beautiful, thank you. Um. All right, questions from the community, so we did publish that if anyone from the community wished to be heard, they could email me up until, uh, half hour before the meeting. I did get one email that I shared with the school committee about an hour ago, um, I forwarded the email from, uh, Mr. Ryan Leighton. Um, I'm not going to read the email publicly only because he references his children and there's their learning situation and then, uh, um, some school department, um, employees. And I don't really want to be in, in violation of multiple, um, privacy and personnel, um, violations by reading the email. Um, but I will characterize the email, is very strongly in support of reopening the schools. Um, he spoke to the hardship of balancing the hybrid model within his family and work expectations. Um, and, and I, I think, I, I think we're all sympathetic, I think we all get it, we all understand, um, you know, and, and I don't think there's anyone that argue, would argue that, um. He feels passionately about it and, and I, I read it very intently, so it certainly is something we will think about, um. So, and that, so that was the only, um, email we got from the community.
Tim, there was one more email, but it, it was received right before seven, so. Just for your awareness, in case the parents listening, there was a second email.
Okay, I see that, I'll have to have a chance to read that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a point.
Just to, obviously not just to me, since you got it as well.
Well, yeah, to the committee, yeah.
All right, so we'll read that, um, and, and, you know, I invite, you know, if, if. If you'd like to contact us individually or come to the meeting to be heard, by all means, um. All right, action items, um, I would take a motion at this time, um, to accept the school committee meeting minutes from the January twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting.
I'm moved.
Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Second by, who was that, I'm sorry?
Ellen.
Ellen. Um, uh, we will do a roll call, Coligan?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
Higgins?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Waltz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. But take a motion to, uh, review and approve accounts payable warrant thirty one S V dated one twenty seven, twenty twenty one. Moved by Teresa?
Uh, second.
Second by Ellen, uh, Coligan?
Hi.
Uh, Ruda?
Hi.
Higgins?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Waltz?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Um. I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant thirty P S dated one twenty six, twenty twenty one.
I'm moved.
Moved by Ellen, second by Teresa, Coligan?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
Higgins?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Waltz?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Um, I would take a motion and we can comment on this real quick, I did have a thought, we could, I would take a motion to approve the recommended changes to file BA school committee operational goals and file BB school committee legal status. By Teresa, second by Ellen, um, my comment is, I, I was just rereading it as we were going through the meeting and we actually can't change that language, because that language references the state law. Um, so we can't rewrite the state law.
Well, I actually looked up the law while we were meeting, um, way in the beginning. And, um, so it doesn't specifically reference the three, five, six, seven or nine, but I did look up other, um, other, uh. Policy manuals and other committees have it listed, like, for example, they have seven people on their committee, so it says seven. So my, my suggestion would be that just, that we just merely state six members of the school committee for, for terms of three years. That, that would be all I would recommend.
Honestly, you know, at this point, we have six, we could go to seven someday, we could go to five someday, I don't want to rewrite policy if we do that, I mean.
We can leave it.
So I, I would favor of just accepting it as written.
I only, because I didn't know if there was a reason, I honestly didn't know.
I misread that referencing state law, so, so. So to, and to, so to move on the motion, uh, I take a vote, Coligan?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
Higgins?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Waltz?
Hi.
McGloughlin is an I as well, and then the last action item, we are going to table that to our next meeting, whether it's next week or, or the regularly scheduled meeting of February. Seventh, I believe that was, um. So at this time, I would take a motion to close the meeting. Moved by Teresa? Second by.
Trista.
Second by Trista, Coligan?
Hi.
Ruda?
Hi.
Higgins?
Hi.
Harrington?
Hi.
Waltz?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, thank you everyone, have a wonderful night and, um, stay safe in the bad weather.